Public comment will be taken today both in person in the council chamber and via teleconference for today's meeting. Whoever is yelling in the back of the room, there will be no disruptions to this meeting. Any yelling out or interruption of council members will be grounds for removal from the meeting, so I'm gonna let you all know that now. I'd like to first note that Councilmember Padilla and Councilmember Lee have been re-elected to the council as of yesterday's election, so congratulations to both of you. And congratulations to all of our incumbent members who were on the ballot, all of whom came in first place, so congratulations to all of you. All right. Mr. Clerk, the first ward—oh, yes, and Marquise, you know, that's just—I'm so sorry. You know, it's just become a foregone conclusion, Mr. Harris-Dawson. I'm not used to you actually having to run against somebody, so congratulations, of course, to Mr. Harris-Dawson as well for your reelection. All right. With that, Councilmember Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to recuse myself from items thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine because my wife's employers have worked with the applicants in these projects. I'm also recusing myself from item fifty-three due to the fact that I am a landlord. Thank you.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you would like to speak to?
I don't know how good it is. Agenda item fifty-six and public comment.
So, there is no item number fifty-six. Did you mean a different item?
The Sherman Way cleaning. Forty-six, whatever it is, forty-six. Forty-six.
Number forty-five, Dogon.
Yeah, forty-five.
Thank you. Okay, so you have one minute for the item, and we're not currently taking general public comment, that will be held later in the speaking.
Okay, so first of all, where's everybody at? Soon as you have public comment, everybody get up and walk out, but then you want us to be respectful and come in here and listen to y'all.
Speaker, I need you to stick to the item.
I am speaking on the damn item. I wanna know where—who am I speaking to?
You can talk to this when you're speaking during general public comment.
Who am I speaking to? You have fifteen council members in here.
Speaker, this is your only warning. Please stick to item number forty-five.
General Dogon, you gotta get on topic.
Lee had the highest number of rest—homeless rests in this district.
So, Speaker, you've been asked politely to stick to the items. You've now forfeited your time.
But, yeah, he got the desk and he was press company.
Please vacate the podium. Speaker? Speaker, please vacate the podium. So, Speaker, you are now disrupting this meeting. This is your only formal warning. We need to move on to the next speaker, so please vacate the podium so that we can move on to the next speaker. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Forty-five, fifty-two, and fifty-three.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
It's pretty interesting that nearly no council members are sitting at their desks and looking at us. My name's Adam. My voice is kinda hoarse from going to a party with Councilmember Yaroslavsky last night in Hollywood, but I'm here from L.A. Can Human and Civil Rights Committee, and number forty-five is about expanding cleanups in the valley, and we know that the report back on forty-one eighteen that was called for by this council—
So, Speaker, this is not—
I'm getting to it. You're not allowed to decide, dude.
I need you to tie it to the agenda.
I'm talking about cleanups, Mr. City Attorney.
This is your only warning.
You should read about subjectivism, because yours sucks. Anyway, number forty-five is about expanding cleanups in the valley, and we know that part of the forty-one eighteen report back includes a report back from the Department of Sanitation, who are involved in cleanups, right, Mr. City Attorney? It's been two-hundred-and-sixty-eight days, and you're expanding cleanups while sixteen-hundred people have died since that report back has been voted on unanimously by this council. Where is the report back? Why aren't any of you asking more questions about this report back?
So, Speaker, you've exhausted your one minute on this item. You need to move on to another item.
Exhaustion is also subjective.
Okay, so you're no longer on topic. You've been warned. You've forfeited the rest of your time. Speaker, this is your only formal warning. You are now disrupting this meeting. We need you to vacate the podium so we can move on to the next speakers. Next speaker.
Fran, item forty-five.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item. Please begin.
I don't think we should expand cleanups without a report back on forty-one eighteen. Cleanups, we know, just take people's belongings off the street without consent. That shit is evil. We need a report back on forty-one eighteen. One time I got yelled at by a cop for sitting on the ground eating a sandwich. That's not cleaning. We need a report back on forty-one eighteen. Thirty organizations have signed on to get us a report back because that law has not kept people safe. So, we don't need more cleanups. We need investment in the city, and we need to be listened to. KDL, you're a fucking racist.
Good morning, sir. I'd like to speak to forty-five, forty-eight, and fifty-three and public comment, but public comment will be later.
Correct. So, you have three minutes for the items. Please begin with the items.
Okay, forty-five refers to steam cleaning a tunnel. Is there gonna be a light at the end of the tunnel? Are you gonna steam clean it, or are you gonna use Clorox to clean that tunnel? The effectuate part of cleaning that tunnel, are you gonna get volunteers to do that? Are you gonna get a city staff to do that? Is it gonna be more about equality, which we should have? Is it still L.A.? Is it still L. period A. period? Or are you gonna go to La-land? I notice on the opening comments, it's all about the law. You're not gonna get any more federal dollars if you keep staying away from L. period A. It's like LA Care, one of the most important institutions in the city of Los Angeles, city L. period A. It started out as Care-LA, which was a free clinic, but that's a different story. So, forty-five refers to a ceremonial sign. I'm wondering if that's gonna be a fathead-type of poster, you know, a big fathead poster. And since you're celebrating Black History Month, I'm wondering, this is the only place—I think Mr. DeLeon said something about the United States of America. This is the only city, the only city council, the only place in all of America that ever had an African-American come in here dressed as a KKK Grand Wizard.
So, Mr. Sacks, this is not on the agenda, so this is your only warning. I need you to tie it to the agenda, please.
I'm talking about a ceremonial sign, so if you're gonna have ceremonial signs, you should put up a ceremonial sign advocating for the KKK, especially if you have an African-American dressed up as a Grand Wizard representing the KKK. As Mr. DeLeon said in the United States of America, this is the only place it ever happened.
So, again, this is not on topic, and you've exhausted your one minute on this item, so please move on to another item.
Okay, so then fifty-three refers to a rent stabilization ordinance. Was that ordinance ever posted by the city council? It's supposed to be posted in three areas. If it's not posted, then it's not a law. And if it's not a law, as usual with the city council that we have, you're stealing public funds. It's the dirtiest there. There's homelessness, there's graffiti, there's trash. You privatized the Sunshine Canyon landfill. It's the new normal. It's uplifting. We need more equality. You have an office of racism. Why do you have an office of racism when you celebrate the KKK with an African-American dressed up as a Grand Wizard? How fucked up is that?
Sampson and forty-five.
Okay, so you have one minute for item forty-five. Please begin.
Um, where is the report back? Forty-one eighteen, the sweeps are still going on. Six people are dying a day in Skid Row, like, and shitty council just wants to sit on their hands and let people die in the streets. Yeah, just where's the report back? And like, why was everyone so anxious and unwilling to like, you know, get it released and whatnot? It just—it's really confusing, because if everyone here cared, then I don't think six people a day would be dying. And that's a really fucked-up statistic. Like, that's super fucked up, and I don't think anyone in the council can really understand that. Most people in the street can't understand that.
Speaker, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
That concludes your time. Please take your seat quietly. Oh, sorry, after Mr. Spindler. How could I forget?
We're listening to the gentleman's cogent remarks.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Oh, you know Buckethead. No, Pumpkinhead. Ew!
Which items would you like to speak to?
Yes, Massa.
Please start the time.
Yeah, just all the—
Please start the time. Thank you. You have three minutes.
That's right, see? Move your ass faster. Number forty-fucking-two, we got the criminal indicted, CD-nine. I thought he was recusing himself on this item. Did I read that wrong? Jesus, look at this, a rent escrow account. Good thing Unisys isn't seeing this, she'd be upset. And then we have Bulgarian national liberat— I don't even know where the fuck Bulgaria is. I don't think that's a real country. Is it a real country, Bob? I'm sure you got one of those free trips over there, you could tell me. What's the capital of Bulgaria? Hey, Marquisi, what's the capital of Bulgaria? Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah, you know nothing. That's why he's a council member. Yes, and he was re-elected. Congratulations. And then forty-four, the Dunn. The Department of Neighborhood Bullshit wants to use this city hall for the Congress of Neighborhoods. There's no such thing as a Congress of Neighborhoods. No, it's a fake government. Bob knows. He goes to these Dunn meetings in the valley, and he knows that they're puppets, they don't do shit. It's just a place to control the locals. Give them a little power. Let them stand up here and think they're in the government. The real power is here in the horse shit shoe. And then we have number six, Amelda doing a good job, recently re-elected as well. Let's give her a hand. Well done. How about that shit? Yes, yes. She doesn't have to face a primary like Kevin, and today she celebrates by cleaning the shit tunnel on Sherman Way. That fucking tunnel, Marquisi, is the dirtiest, grimiest, filthiest fucking place you've ever driven a car. You go into a tunnel, and it goes underneath the Van Nuys Airport like this, see? There's tagging everywhere, homeless, feces, drug needles, and then, of course, the occasional wallet that we find under there. Bob, did you find a wallet? I found one a couple of weeks ago. It had about four-hundred in it. Then we get to forty-six, Buckethead. We don't want any motions from you. You've been talking too much. Then we have the greatest thing ever, the ceremonial thank-you, naming Avok in his honor. Our own Avok getting his own room. Let's give him a hand. All right. Yes, that's right. He's been covering your ass and keeping you out of FBI indictment for almost forty years, and he learned everything from the late Nate Holden. Another criminal. So, we'll go ahead, and we'll waive the rest of our time, and we'll come up here and tell you to go fuck yourself in another minute. Thanks.
I'm sorry, it was a long agenda. Can you tell me what items are available for public comment, please?
So, again, the items that are open for public comment are six as amended and forty-two through fifty-three. So, which items would you like to speak to?
Um, definitely forty-two through fifty-three, but can you just really quick just tell me like, a few words about item six? Like, is that like what it is?
Speaker, you need to look at the agenda before you begin. So, you have two minutes for the items you've identified.
All right, thanks. Sorry, I'm on the phone, my bad.
Please begin.
In general public comment?
We're not currently doing general public comment at this time, but you can stay on the line.
Sorry, you guys like cut me off from general public comment yesterday. Um, you didn't give it to me. So, please put me on general public comment later after the items. Um, so, starting my time, forty-two is a reap item, does bullshit. Um, I wish I could just steal from somebody, and then when they find out, I'd be like, damn, here's it back, um, and I don't have to pay any damages. Uh, forty-three is four-hundred dollars to light up City Hall for Bulgarian liberation, National Liberation Day. That's interesting. I would love to see City Hall lit up once for Palestinian liberation. Uh, Bulgarian—the Bulgarian Empire fell like a long time ago, um, so it's kinda weird. It's kinda seemed like nostalgia for your, like, European voters. Um, no offense to them. Uh, forty-four, oh, fuck that, offense to them. Uh, item forty-four, Dunn is useless, and this really should just be in communication with the neighborhood councils directly, all ninety-nine of them, because that would be more productive than doing anything with Dunn. They're useless, and all they do is inhibit the neighborhood councils. Forty-five, Sherman Way monthly cleaning, that's crazy. Amelda monthly cleans out that tunnel. I would love to see our council district do monthly cleanings of certain areas that don't involve just sweeping people and removing them. Uh, item forty-six is renaming the area for TDE, yo, top dog. You know, I have a lot of respect for him and his artists, a big fan of Kendrick and J-Rock and Schoolboy, but it's a shame that y'all let yourselves be used as puppets and just shookin' and jivin' for all these fucking racist-ass politicians. Uh, item forty-seven is soundproof rooms for Personnel Department. Um, sounds like they need that. Uh, item forty-eight, uh, labor costs for ceremonial signing of some bullshit. Um, that labor cost is really, really low. I don't know if it just really—it's not much labor, or y'all just don't value the labor. Um, sidewalks improvement for item forty-nine, we need that everywhere. Item fifty is a rental fee waiver for, uh, a really good thing, actually. Uh, it's nice when we do stuff for people that need, you know, some, uh, brightening of their lives.
Yes, caller, your— Next caller.
Caller, what items would you like to speak on?
All right. Good morning to the seventy-two percent of voters in City fourteen who voted against Kevin DeLeon.
Good morning. So, which items would you like to speak to?
All items and general comment.
So, you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
All right, so, let's see. Let's start off with—yeah, I'll pull this up here. Um, we have item forty-three, lighting up City Hall in recognition of Bulgarian National Liberation Day. Um, just, you know, virtue signaling to try to get support from them, they're doing nothing to help them. They should also light up City Hall in recognition of Palestinian liberation. Um, we have item forty-four, that's the Department of Neighborhood, Dunn for the Congress of Neighborhoods. So, they're just gonna go ahead and ignore the neighborhood councils unless they're saying something really fascist, and in that case, they're saying something great, apparently, according to you all fuckers, the fifteen of you. Uh, we have item six, item forty-five for CD-six, a motion from Nury Martinez, or I'm sorry, Anelda Padilla, who's serving as her proxy, and Monica Rodriguez for the monthly Sherman Way tunnel cleaning. Um, but is this like a sweep? No on that, sweeps till. It would be noted in the forty-one eighteen report that you keep recusing to release, and that you claimed was false when you know it's true. Um, let's see, we have item forty-six, that's naming an intersection after Anthony Tivith, TDE, as part of your whole virtue signaling for Black History Month. Um, we have items—we have soundproof equipment. We have the ceremonial sign ceremony in CD-fifteen. What ceremonial sign? It doesn't say what the ceremonial sign is, so how are we—how are you supposed to vote on this? How are we supposed to comment on this? We don't know what the sign is going to be. What is the ceremonial sign? Like, like, you're—it's missing some information. Uh, we have forty-nine, the one that was called about sidewalk project, repair the sidewalks. We have the glamour gowns event at the convention center. Um, we have naming the CLA's office after this guy. Um, the CLA should do better work. Uh, we have—oh, we have eviction. We need—to protect people from evictions. You're in a state of emergency. Nobody should be evicted, ever. Um, yeah, so— Keep running your meetings as scrupulous and terribly as possible, and—
Caller, your time has expired. Next caller.
It's Rob Quan. I'd like to speak on items forty-four and fifty-one.
Okay, so you have two minutes for the items. Please begin.
Thank you, and item forty-four is on the Congress of Neighborhood Councils, and there's an interesting conversation that the council president recently proposed. Maybe we should get the neighborhood council members more involved with our charter commission. Um, and I just want a caution on that, as much as I want to empower our neighborhood council members. Are they ready for that kind of political environment? Think back to redistricting. Some of y'all weren't around back then, but Mitchell Farrell appointed Commissioner Garston, somebody who was the founder of the Echo Park Neighborhood Council, the president of the Echo Park Improvement Association, and that dude got steamrolled, and he embarrassed his colleagues by actually dismissing the need to embed compliance with the Voting Rights Act in their map making. Just an absolute embarrassment. He had to replace that guy. Uh, Councilmember Rahman appointed somebody very well-intentioned, Alexandra, somebody really seasoned at City Hall, the executive director of a nonprofit, but was not ready to be a political gladiator duking it out with people. And these commissioners will be under a whole lot of pressure, and it's just important to remember, uh—
So, Mr. Quan, you've exhausted your one minute on this item? Please move on to the other item.
They were a bit lost out there. Item fifty-one is on Avok. And, uh, Kevin, 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 please don't feel too good about yourself. Mr. Kocorian talked about you being incumbent first place. Let's see how long that lasts, but that was the worst performance by an incumbent council member in over twenty years. Twelve points less than Nick Pacheco in two thousand and three.
So, Mr. Quan, I need you to tie this to the item, or we're gonna move on to the next caller.
But I'm gonna hang this shit back to the item by saying Avok note. I want Avok to tell us how long it's been. It'd probably be thirty, forty years. And, uh, speaking about Avok, um, Councilmember Harris-Dawson introduced an amendment a year ago, and a motion that was passed on bringing consequences for—
Mr. Quan, your time has expired. Next caller.
Okay, so I see Mr. Sacks, I see Mr. Spindler, and so we'll close public comment after that, as I don't see any other speakers approaching the podium.
That's right. Yes, that's right. So, we pulled John Lee over the finish line, sixty-plus percent because of GoPuppets endorsement. Let's give him a hand. Very good. That's right. Yeah, now you owe us something, staffer B. Yes, you better run away. Then we have the failure of Kevin DeLeon. Odd even, thirty-fucking percent of an incumbent. What a failure. And he was throwing a party last night. He didn't invite Marquisi, he didn't invite me. Now, because of that Buckethead, now I don't get a free bottle of booze and a prostitute. So, I'm really upset about that. Then finally, Nithia Ramen Noodle in the runoff against Ethan Weaver, only five hundred votes were away. So, here's to you, Nithia. Whee! That's why she's not here, she's home crying. Cry, because we're gonna get—
Next speaker. Please take your seat quietly, Mr. Spindler.
Yes, thank you again. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Let's see. The lack of ethics in the city council is humongous. The ethics have gone out the window ever since it became the new normal. Ever since there was somebody who was killed, who was on the union negotiating team for the city of L.A.'s negotiations for the union. A woman's son was killed at a marijuana clinic back in two thousand and eight, and that was never solved, but we know who the murderer was. We may not know who the murderer was, but we know who ordered the hit. We have one of the largest, uh, drug dealers in America, in all of America, right here in L.A. County. It's great. It's all about—
That's your time. Thank you so much, Mr. Sacks. We're gonna now go to phones. There are thirteen callers on the line, one-three. Thirteen callers on the line, they'll have a minute each.
Okay, good. All right, I wanted to talk on item twenty-two, retail theft money. Um, item, or one C, which allocates two-point-seven million for Peregrine Systems, Inc., for real-time decision operations management. Well, according to Wiki, PSI went bankrupt in two thousand and four after victims were prosecuted for fraud. So, if you use the language of the Police Commission attachment, what comes up is a company called Peregrine Technologies, and that firm was started by Palantir alumni, which was used—that's Peter Seale's firm, which was used to help the Trump administration prosecute, try and prosecute families that crossed the border. They used that technology to try and map out the family relations of the children. So, I don't know which system the LAPD wants to use, but people in the L.A. City Council really might want to analyze the proposals in item twenty-two, because it just seems like they want a rubber-stamp spine technology, which has been used for inappropriate purposes. So, we look at that.
Caller, your time has expired. Next caller.
Is it okay to go?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. One minute now. Uh, to the winners, congratulations, and remember what the great Abraham Lincoln said, "Do I not crush my enemies when I make them my friends?" To the challengers, thank you, thank you for challenging and trying to make this great, the city even greater, and to Mr. Richard Serrano. Mr. Serrano, you may not have won the sixth district council office, but you, sir, are honorary mayor, and we hope that you will lead us in keeping corruption out of the sixth district, and we look forward to your leadership in that. And to Mr. Kocorian, God bless you, and buddy, I'm gonna miss you. You know, we fought, but you were always an honorable man, someone that I respected. I just didn't like the fact that Martinez was still in the council office. Thank you.
Next caller. You have one minute.
I'd like to state that I have reached out to CD-thirteen, the Department of Cultural Affairs, the City Attorney's Office, the Bureau of Engineering and Others regarding a potential legal issue, but star installations on the Walk of Fame, section twenty-two point one oh nine of the L.A.'s Charter's Code states that any work of art under control or ownership of the city, including any alterations to such art or work of a permanent character, requires the majority vote of Department of Cultural Affairs commissioners, which hasn't been happening. I hope the city attorney will expeditiously inform the board, CD-thirteen, and council members if twenty-two point one oh nine superseded the language of LAMC twenty-eight point oh four B, or if they're in conflict. The next Walk of Fame ceremony is this Friday. Um, it's also one thousand one hundred and fifty-five days since January sixth, and the city is still choosing to honor the insurrectionist Donald Trump on its sidewalk when it can choose otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn. Can I get some time for the items as well, because I was in the queue, and you said you'd call everybody?
So, the public comment on the items has been closed, but you have your one minute for general public comment.
Right, because you closed it when you knew I was in—okay, you knew I was in the room when you closed it, so you're an asshole, and I'll comment on the items. Uh, Avok Quadian is the leader of the assholes. This is a guy who is very charming outwardly, but conveyed literally and in English, who want all the progressive council members and new people, even McCosker, to listen. He said he did not like the public. He didn't feel that the public should even come to city council meetings. And he worked tirelessly to trick the public. He had three committees at the exact same time. We were like, what? He moved the pernicious lean items up into a secret lair where Kocorian and Englander massacred people and took all their money, where public couldn't even get there. And then he engineered this idea with Kocorian that you'll have committee meetings, like item forty today, where you're working on the city market project, and you say you took public comment, but did you take virtual public comment during committee? Broke? Broke? Why is your head getting larger? No, you didn't. So, you didn't really take public comment, and you don't take it here, because it's in the section marked "Go Fuck Yourself," courtesy of Avok Quadian.
Well, I'd like to speak on the items I signed up for. Is this an opportunity to do that?
Good morning. So, you have one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Well, I was just asked—I was just asked which items, and I too was kicked out of this. So, you guys are gonna get sued if you mess with that. DanielGus.substacktom explains why they keep picking me and Eric Previn and other people who write about corruption in City Hall. I have a story last week called "L.A.'s Next Corruption Scandal," in which we question why Nithia and Hugo and Unisys have agreed to co-govern their roles in the city of Los Angeles in exchange for a quid pro quo endorsement from the DSA. That is bribery. That's not doing something— That is bribery. That's not doing something uh because of, because of an endorsement. It is quid pro quo when you agree to share power to run your office. That's why Karen Price is under indictment. And by the way, I have reason to believe that Karen Price is gonna get hit with witness tampering. How about that?
Alright, uh, first of all, uh, fuck the city council. Um, uh, congratulations to nobody. Congratulations to Richard Serrano for really being the only person to have the balls to stand up for like a, you know, a writing candidacy to make a point, to say that the people are standing up, that they wanna be heard, that we know you're not listening to us. Um, and I wanna see more energy like that. I support Richard Serrano and whatever he's doing right now. Um, shout out uh fucking none of y'all. Um, LA City, uh, I'm sorry, LA Valley Gun Club is looking for new members. Email us at lavalleygc@gmail.com or lavalleygunclub@gmail.com. Uh, if you don't use it, you lose it in terms of Second Amendment and you don't have a First Amendment unless you have a Second. Make sure we know, you know, make sure we take the city back properly. Um, these people are not gonna let us have it. They're gonna let us all die. Uh, thank you and uh, let freedom ring.
Alright, so for my general public comment, which is happening as you guessed, at or near the beginning of the meeting, are we right? I mean, you know, ninety minutes into the meeting, um, and you know, after you voted on everything, that's, that counts as at or near the beginning of the meeting, doesn't it, Paul? Not that he's even there. Um, but um, but yeah, um, Kevin lost badly in the um, in the election. Yes, he's technically in first place, but that's just because there's seven other candidates. He got twenty-seven point fifteen percent. He's going to lose in a landslide in the um, in the runoff. I mean, this isn't, he doesn't even have a chance, I don't think. I mean, you, you, it's, it's gonna be, this is so embarrassing for Kevin. No one in CD-fourteen likes you, Kevin. You're gonna lose badly. It's over. Um, your political career is over. Just, why don't you just resign now? Um, like here, you're gonna lose so badly.
Caller, your time has expired. The horseshoe? Alright, seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody.